I'd like to call the monthly Board of Education meeting to order. Can you please rise for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Key makes a motion, I have second. Mr. Quinn's second. It's all in favor show of hands. Seven oh. Citizens' statements. Dr. Henry?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we did not have any requests to speak tonight as per board policy BDDH.
Written communications?
And we had no written communications either.
Number five, systems update. Military update?
Our, uh, our installation has just, uh, been very impressed with the school. Um, the feedback we've, we're getting from, uh, parents and, uh, the, um, uh, leadership, uh, has just been outstanding. Um, uh, we've got a lot of new, um, parents coming in, uh, with, uh, children, uh, from other installations. Um, their, uh, initial feedback has been very positive and, um, they're just so impressed. Um, uh, I know, um, uh, the, uh, the, uh, input that we're getting, uh, to the, um, base leadership has just been very outstanding. So I have nothing, uh, negatives to report at this time. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate everything you guys do for us as well. You've been a huge supporter and a big help to our district. District announcements. Dr. Henry?
Thank you, Mr. President. And, uh, tonight we recognize Waynesville High School. I see quite a few out there, uh, in the audience. Uh, I also see one of our basketball players, we're gonna recognize a little bit, has a game. So we're gonna hurry here so we can get you up here. We, we want you to be down there, uh, to, to help us out. So we appreciate all you do for our students, grades nine through twelve. Uh, look forward to hearing, uh, about our CTA spotlight on education. Uh, earlier this month, each sixth grader received a Chromebook as part of our one-to-one pilot computer to student program. For the past several years, community members and members of our comprehensive school improvement planning team have listed, uh, increasing student use of technology as a high priority. Additionally, during our Proposition One campaign, voters supported the use of additional tax levy funds for safety measures and technology for students. The sixth graders have those now. It was great to see. I was in the building, had a little, uh, girl come up and shake my hand and say, "Thank you for the computer." And I said, "Well, you have a lot of people, uh, to thank here, but I'll, I'll say your welcome for us." Uh, I also want to thank our school board, uh, for making this happen, uh, the, the, making this pilot possible uh, and for approving plans to expand, uh, this initiative to grades three through twelve by January of two thousand and twenty. Uh, students in grades six through twelve whose parents attend the Edge Parent Training Program and give their children permission may take the Chromebooks home. Grades three through five will have classroom carts, uh, with their laptops. Uh, to help students who are on field trips, banned competitions, or athletes traveling to sporting events, Wi-Fi has been added to five of our district, uh, trip buses. Uh, so students may have access to the internet while on these buses. As you know, our, our, uh, Google platform is used quite a bit and other, uh, uh, other methods and, and students are able to interact when they have Wi-Fi and do assignments and put them in their folders and all those things like that. So it's, it's a really nice thing. Uh, Waynesville High School boys wrestlers Gavin Sacks and Michael Cassidy are both ranked among the top four wrestlers in the state. Congratulations to those boys. As you may recall, this is the first year for girls wrestling in the state, and Waynesville girls wrestlers are making an impressive debut. Twin Sisters Justice Sealy and Jasmine Sealy are both ranked second in the state in their weight classes. And the Tigers girls team sits at number five overall in Missouri. We will host the first ever Girls Wrestling Ozark Conference Meet starting at three PM Thursday, January twenty-fourth. So it's a, it's a inaugural season for girls wrestling. Very excited for them. Waynesville Middle School will hold its National Junior Honor Society induction at six PM on Friday, February first in the middle school gym. Uh, we will host District Honor Choir on Saturday, February second. Students from multiple school districts had to audition and be selected for it. The public is invited to attend this conference, or concert, and will be held at five PM Saturday, February second at Waynesville High School. Uh, students will be participating in community-based activities for Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service. There will be no school on Monday, January twenty-first, in observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day. And there'll be a half day of school for students on February fifteenth for teachers in service, and tentatively, there'll be no school on Monday. February the eighteenth for President's Day. We would have to miss ten inclement weather days to have to come to school on that day. I don't know why I said that. So, so here we go.
I, I don't think you're gonna miss it.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. It's pretty exciting stuff with that wrestling. I know you're probably ecstatic over that. Uh, consent?
The number one sport.
Consent agenda items. Financials. Dr. Berger?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the financials for January tenth, uh, in the MOSIP account, forty-one million, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars, twenty cents. CDs, ten point five million. In the general account, three million, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars, fifty cents. Payroll account, one thousand, seventy-two dollars, nine cents. Total funds, fifty-four million, nine hundred and seven thousand, three hundred dollars, seventy-nine cents.
New contracts, MOUs? Anything on there?
Entertain any questions, but nope, nothing out of the ordinary.
Do I have a motion to accept consent agenda items A through F?
I'll make that motion.
I have a second. Mr. Riley's second. It's all in favor show of hands. Seven oh. Okay. Number seven, student recognitions. Missouri State Beta Competition. Dr. Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. In December, we had students who participated in the, uh, Missouri State Beta Competition, and we had two who have qualified for the national competition that will be held in Oklahoma this June. So tonight, we would like to recognize Zoe Francisco. Zoe placed second in the speech category. And we'd also like to recognize Vanessa Blake, who placed first in the poetry competition.
Congratulations. CTA spotlight on education. Uh, Ms. Koch, La-Roth? Close? All right. It's all asked.
Hello, I'm Fonda Crowe Floroff, and I am a high school representative of our community Teachers Association. And I would first like to recognize Lakeisha Greer, classified staff. Lakeisha Greer goes above and beyond in working with the students in high school English Language Learner Program. Whether it's extra help on assignments or tests, Ms. Greer spends many hours beyond her contract working with students. Many students gain confidence and grow academically from working with her, due in part to her very natural and kind personality that really connects with the students. She also works well with the teaching staff and is always quick to seek clarification about a test or an assignment over which students may be struggling. She even personally hand-delivers student work to the teachers to make sure they get it. And the Waynesville High School students and teachers benefit greatly from the work and dedication that Ms. Greer puts into her position. Okay, and the next honoree is Gary Cook. Mr. Cook, a retired Marine, former special services teacher, and a teacher of sociology and American government demonstrates every day that every student can succeed, and he also helps teachers succeed by serving as a mentor. Mr. Cook encourages and motivates students by his positive attitude and a healthy sense of humor. The respect is mutual between students and teacher as well. He inspires students to reach their goals outside of the classroom. For example, with his assistance, a Transition Three student recently signed to become a Marine after graduation. Last but not least, Mr. Cook supports fellow teachers as a mentor, problem solver, and curriculum expert, even if he's busy. Gary Cook always has a friendly face and goes above and beyond the call of duty when lending support to Waynesville High School students and staff.
It's probably important to mention he's married to Shirley, and that's a, that's a pretty big job right there. We work together. I, I can do that. All right. Staff recognitions. Transportation Employee of the Month, Mrs. Bills?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, tonight it's my honor to recognize Alex Dubon. Alex is, uh, January, uh, Transportation Employee of the Month. Alex has been with the school district Sep- uh, since September two thousand and nine, and he currently works as our driver trainer and ensures that, um, our drivers can pass the test and deliver our kids to and from school in a safe manner. But beyond that, um, if you've ever worked with Alex, he's just such a problem solver. Um, he just will commit to doing anything that he needs to do in order to make our trans- uh, transportation department better. And for that, we certainly appreciate him and are honored to recognize him tonight. So thank you, Alex. Oh, I'm taking your certificate. That's not good. That's yours, bud.
Congratulations to all three, and thank you very, all of you for doing what you do. Number ten, board recognition. Dr. Henry?
Well, for our first-time viewers, our board members usually don't have all of these beautiful packages surrounding them here and things like that. So it's a special, special time of the year and a special month for us where we get to recognize our board members. It's actually, uh, I believe the second week of February now. Uh, however, that's, that is, uh, prior to our, our next board meeting. So we're recognizing our board members tonight. A few words to say and, uh, and just wanna make sure we appreciate, or I express my appreciation, the appreciation our team has, uh, for our school board. A quality school board provides the platform upon which successful school districts are built. Tonight, we recognize the time, effort, and leadership provided by the members of our outstanding Board of Education. Serving as a school board member requires a great deal of commitment and sacrifice as the challenges that confront education continue to grow and become more complex. Unlike some elected officials, these individuals are living and working among the constituents they serve and dedicate significant amounts of private time to receive input regarding the school district and even some scrutiny, from time to time, uh, regarding, uh, various decisions made by the school district. These individuals do this to ensure an excellent education is provided to the young people of this community. And as an employee and parent of this school district, I appreciate all you have done and will continue to do for our students. School boards deal with a myriad of issues, but most, the most important issue for any school board is to ensure high levels of learning occurs throughout our school district. While this may sound simple, it entails a great deal of focus and energy to avoid diverting too much time and attention to other aspects that, of schooling that can sometimes blur that focus on learning. Our Board of Education remains committed to focusing on student learning as a priority and was recognized as an outstanding Board of Education by the Missouri School Boards Association for their commitment to learning during the June MSBA Conference. Our board approved the district's pursuit of a one-point-two-five-million-dollar Department of Defense Educational Activity Grant to fund increased science, technology, engineering, and mathematics programs and hands-on instruction throughout the school district. In addition, this grant will expand programming such as robotics cla- or clubs for all of our students in the district. Our board members are progressive, and they understand what it takes to educate students for success in college and career. Our board has a strong balance of individuals representing all aspects of our community, and through their guidance, our students continue to perform at high levels. Thank you to our board members for your service to our kids. It is truly appreciated. So at this time, I will present a certificate recognizing the contributions of each of our board members. First up will be President, Mr. Paul Schultz. Dr. Leroy Fulmer, Vice President. Butch O'Reilly. Dan Deering. Charles Quinn. Okay, I, I won't go there on TV. All right. Although I do kinda wanna use that one, Mr. Quinn, on the comment at Rotary the other day. I won't do that for, for posterity. Janet Kreider. Mike Keeling. And finally, uh, someone new to our, our team, but we do wanna recognize him and, and look forward to a, a long-working relationship. Mr. Bill Wassel, Command Rep from Fort Leonard Wood. Again, thank you for all that you do for our kids. We appreciate you.
I also want to add to that with this group. It's been an honor to work with every one of them. Um, all of you, we appreciate everything you give us. I know Melissa, her class brings us cards and some other ones do, and I, I read every one of them, and they crack me up. I, they ask, "Kinda cat you got?" I mean, i- it's great stuff. We, we just appreciate that more than you'll ever know. It, it's a huge pleasure to do what we do, and it's a very big pleasure to work with everybody up here. They're, they're all Waynesville. They're all for you first. So, thank you, guys. Okay, discussion item, mid-year performance update. Dr. Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, good evening. Tonight I'm going to share our mid-year performance data, and we track our data, um, throughout the year so we know areas that we need to make adjustments on as we go throughout the year. And to just track our general overall progress. So tonight I will be presenting on our district writing prompt data, our standards proficiency through the end of first semester, as well as our mid-year STAR assessment data. The district writing prompt is utilized across the grade levels four times per year to measure student progress in writing towards our end-of-the-year writing standards. The writing prompt presents the students with unfamiliar texts, which they then respond to. This is similar to what a student would see on a state assessment or in real life where we're teaching students to read information they come in contact with and respond to that infor- information. The writing prompt is assessed in three areas. Area one is question. This assesses students' ability to develop an idea that addresses the topic of the prompt. And the area of question, sixty point two percent of students were proficient mid-year as compared to forty-five point eight percent at the end of first quarter. The end-of-year goal is eighty percent of students scoring in the proficient range. Area two of the writing prompt is text evidence. This assesses the student's ability to respond to the prompt using specific and relevant text-based details. Fifty-six point two percent of students were proficient in this area on prompt two as compared to forty-eight point five percent on prompt one. Area three looks at students' use of grade-level appropriate conventions. District-wide, fifty-five point eight percent of students were proficient on prompt two as compared to forty-six point two percent of students on prompt one. In our English nine and ten classes, students complete a blended writing prompt two times per year. In a blended writing prompt, students are given several source documents such as a newspaper article as, or in, an information from a website. Students then respond to the prompt by using two types of writing such as narrative and opinion writing. Additionally, students will need to support their responses by formally or informally citing the source documents. Students are assessed in the areas of blending writing genres, content development, conventions, organizational structure, and use of resources. This task is similar to what students are expected to do on the English ten and of course, and, and of course, exam in the spring. At the end of second quarter, students in pre-K through six had an overall proficiency on assessed ELA standards of fifty-six point two percent as compared to forty-seven point five percent at the end of first quarter. Most of these standards are year-long standards, so we will watch students' growth throughout the year. Our CSIP goal is for eighty percent of students to be proficient or advanced at the end of the year. Teachers track progress on each assessed grade-level standard and utilize that information to adjust instruction and identify students for additional intervention supports. At the end of second quarter, students in pre-K through six had an overall proficiency on assessed math standards of sixty-four point nine percent as compared to fifty-nine point one percent at the end of first quarter. Just like in reading, these are end-of-year standards, our CSIP goal is for eighty percent of students to be proficient or advanced at the end of the year. At the middle school level, mid-year standards proficiency exceeded sixty percent for all core content classes. At the high school level, mid-year standards proficiency exceeded seventy percent for most of the core content classes. The STAR Early Literacy Assessment is utilized to assess early literacy skills of kindergarten students. The percent of students meeting the expected benchmark increased for all buildings from the beginning of the year administration through the mid-year administration. East showed scale score growth of one hundred and two points. Freedom showed seventy-seven points of growth. Partridge had eighty-nine points of growth. Thayer had fifty-five points of growth, and Wood had ninety-six points of scale score growth on STAR Early Literacy. The STAR reading test assesses students in the area of reading. All students in grades one through ten were assessed at the beginning of the year and the middle of the year. The percentage of students meeting the benchmark at each grade level ranged from forty-nine to seventy-four percent. Growth in the percentage of students meeting the benchmark was made in all grade levels except for seventh and tenth grades. The reading benchmark is based on a nationally-normed set of scores. On level is considered being at the fortieth percentile. This means a student earned a score that was higher than forty percent of students at that grade level who were part of the norming group. This slide represents the percentage of students who met the STAR reading benchmark at each of our elementary buildings. This slide depicts the average STAR reading scale score by grade level. The list to the right shows the scale score needed to meet the fortieth percentile benchmark of on level. A fairly consistent pattern of growth can be seen through ninth grade. In all grade levels, except for the tenth grade, the average scale score exceeds the mid-year benchmark level. At the tenth grade level, the overall scale score declined to a level below our ninth grade average scale score. Retesting of students at the tenth grade level is underway to determine if student performance has declined or if there was a testing issue with that grade level. Additionally, tenth grade students who consistently scored low on the test and retest have been identified for additional interventions. This slide shows the average scale score by building at the elementary level. Across the board, the average scale score exceeds the mid-year benchmark cut score. This slide shows the average grade-level equivalency at each grade level. At the elementary grade levels, an average of a half a year's growth was made from the beginning of the year administration through the mid-year administration. The data on this slide shows the average grade-level equivalency by building. The STAR math test assesses students in the area of mathematics. All students in grades one through eight are assessed. The percentage of students meeting the benchmark at each grade level ranged from sixty-two to ninety-two percent. Growth was made from the beginning of the year assessment to the mid-year assessment in all grade levels. As with reading, the on-level benchmark is earning a scale score that is higher than forty percent of students in the, of, in the norming group at that grade level. This chart shows the percentage of students meeting the benchmark at each elementary building. This slide depicts the average STAR sca- STAR math scale score by grade level. A fairly consistent pattern of growth can be seen through fifth grade at which point scores begin to level out. The list to the right shows the scale score needed to meet the benchmark. At all, and at all grade levels, the average scale score exceeds the mid-year benchmark level. This slide shows the average scale score by building at the elementary level. As with reading, across the board, the average scale scores exceeded the mid-year benchmark cut score. Most grade levels met or exceeded an average of a half year's growth from the beginning of the year administration through the mid-year administration on STAR math. At the elementary level in each building, the average grade level equivalency met or exceeded the tested grade level. This data is monitored at the collaborative team level, the building level, and district level and is used to make adjustments in instructional programming and is also used for planning purposes. Are there any questions?
Questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Proposed new job description, Mrs. Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following proposed new job description is presented for your review as a first reading. Three point zero point nine DODIA Project Edge Director. The administration will request approval at the February meeting.
See technology update, Mr. Henson, Mr. Harrison.
First of all, on behalf of Mr. Henson and myself and everyone in the technology department, we just want to thank you for the opportunity to come and update you on all the exciting things that we have going on in the world of technology. And also personally, I just want to thank you everyone for, you know, as, as Dr. Henry stated earlier, we have a very progressive, progressive board. And everyone has always been very supportive of all the technology projects that we've done. And it makes it a very exciting place to be in the Waynesville R six. So, thank you very much for that. And on the technology update, the first thing I want to cover is our three focal areas for this school year. And these, these also go back to our C-SIP goals as well. So those are to provide and maintain appropriate instructional resources, support services, and a cyber-safe environment, promote the effective use of technology during instruction, as well as to promote the relevant use of technology to accelerate student learning. And as, as you all know, we, we kind of made some organizational changes in the technology department this year. And we kind of split it up to where I'm the director of, over the infrastructural side of technology, whereas Mr. Henson is the director over the instructional side. So I'm going to cover a few things here, kind of of our, our day-to-day on the infrastructural side as well as some of the projects that we have done and have coming up as well. So, on the hardware side, we currently maintain approximately ninety-five hundred in user devices, which is computers, tablets, printers, all those, all those things. And then also, we, in collaboration with K-12 ITC, we manage our, our network and our data center. And then we also manage the intercoms and clocks, security cameras, and the door access control systems. And from an application standpoint, we manage the email, Google, our web filter, our phone system. And we also manage the backend of our student information system, financial system, and several other miscellaneous applications. Some of the projects that we've had going on currently, um, past and currently, um, we've closed approximately twenty six, twenty-six hundred help desk tickets since July first of this year. Um, we had the K-12 ITC implementation this year, which, um, we felt has went really well. And there's been a few bumps along the way, but nothing outside of the realm of what's to be expected with a project of that magnitude. Um, we had, we were busy at the middle school this summer, getting all the computers and network and everything set up for, uh, for the new students coming in. And we've rolled out approximately fifteen hundred and fifty Chromebooks so far this year. And that includes student and teacher machines. Um, we're currently working on a new intercom system at the, at the high school, which is a project we're really excited about because that's, that's been in need for a while now. So, we're in the process, as we speak, of updating the intercom system at the high school. And just recently, we, we implemented a new help desk and asset management system, which is going to, uh, provide us with a lot of good information and help us bring efficiencies to, to the department as well. Some of the upcoming projects that we have, um, we're going to be continually ongoing, on analyzing our infrastructure as far as Wi-Fi network bandwidth goes to make sure that as the, uh, as the, the Chromebooks are rolled out from building to building, that we have adequate Wi-Fi connection and bandwidth and everything to support that. And then we're going to be continuing to roll out the Chromebooks as we order those and come in. There's quite a bit of work involved with getting those set up and in the students' hands. And then we're also going to be installing a new security camera system at East Elementary this year. And we're going to be piloting the new intercom system at the high school for, for a few weeks. And if all goes well, we hope to be able to roll that, that new intercom system out district-wide. And that's all I have, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Henson now.
All right, good evening. I'm going to jump over to the instructional side of technology now. So I guess the big trending thing right now in the Waynesville School District, as Dr. Henry mentioned earlier in the district announcements, is the one-to-one pilot program. Um, this is my twentieth year in the district, and I got to tell you, I've never been more excited about something than this. Being able to, be able to provide a device for, um, every student is something that, um, I'm proud to be a part of, and I'm truly excited about it. So, what we have done so far, you know, we branded it and called it Project Edge, educating our digital generation effectively. Um, so far, at the end of November to right before Christmas break, I held three, uh, parent informational meetings at the sixth grade center about the whole Project Edge initiative and the one-to-one rollout. Um, those meetings were well-attended. Uh, we have also developed a webpage with, uh, relevant information and, um, FAQs on there. So if a parent needs somewhere to go, uh, about some type of question that they may have, they can go directly to our webpage and go to those FAQs. Um, right now, we have over two hundred students. When I looked before I came, uh, to the meeting, we have right around two hundred and forty-eight students that have paid the one-to-one insurance, and they are taking the device home from school. So that's about fifty-five percent of our student population at the, um, sixth grade center. Um, on the fourth of January is when we first issued these Chromebooks. And I think that picture there of that little girl carrying that Chromebook, uh, um, that picture speaks, you know, a million words here. That, that's how excited they were. That day when those kids received those, I mean, it meant something to them. And as Dr. Henry mentioned earlier, I was with him when that little girl came up and shook our hand and said, "Thank you" for, for providing me this. And that was just an awesome feeling. And then students, um, started actually taking the Chromebooks home this past Friday, January eleventh. And we waited a, you know, five days in between their school days, that is, just because, um, the instructional tech from the, uh, sixth grade center created some orientation videos and some orientation activities that the teachers worked with the students that week prior to letting them take them home to kind of help prepare them to know, okay, this is how you take care of the device. These are some of the ins and outs of the device, since it's a little bit different than the current device they use with a Mac. So, we wanted to make sure that our, that our students truly understand, stood the responsibility of taking them outside of the, uh, the building. Our timeline right now with the one-to-one initiative, um, we actually started back in August. Um, we started with our third grade students, and we went cart-based. So every third grade student in the district currently has a Chromebook that they use on a daily basis. Um, those Chromebooks are, um, housed every night within their classroom. Um, when they get, come to school the next day and the teacher asks them to pull out their Chromebook, they pull out the same Chromebook every day. That is theirs. It's just kept at school in a cart base. Um, this January, as I just spoke, sixth grade is our pilot to take home. Um, sixth grade is that transitional year, trying to get them ready for that middle school setting, that secondary setting. So we thought that would be a perfect, um, area to pilot it. Plus also with it being kind of a contained grade level, contained building, if there were bumps in the road, it would be easier to kind of work through those bumps. Um, August of two thousand nineteen, this upcoming school year, fourth and fifth grade will be one-to-one, cart-based as well. And then our seventh and eighth grade students will be take home. So those sixth graders that currently have Chromebooks, those Chromebooks will follow them to the seventh grade. And then we'll be issuing new Chromebooks to the eighth grade, new Chromebooks to the sixth grade. So we're going to try to get like a four-year lifecycle, and that Chromebook follows that kid as they progress through school. January twenty twenty is our big one. That's when our ninth through twelfth graders, um, will be taking Chromebooks home. And then right now, um, August twenty twenty, we haven't forgot about our K-two population. At that time, I would like to get some type of touch device, whether it be a Chromebook with a touchscreen or an iPad, uh, keep those cart-based with our K-two population. So, the plan right now until we get up to August twenty twenty is these machines that we're pulling from these other grade levels, these laptops, trickle them down to our, to our K-through-two population and make sure they have devices in their classroom to use as well. So, along with instructional technology comes the collaborative support that we provide and the professional learning opportunities. We have technology integration specialists, and with the whole, uh, reorganization, one of their roles this year, or what we were trying to accomplish this year, is those technology integration specialists within a building, they spend more time instructing. They spend more time working with the teachers, more time working with the students. Um, right now, for first semester, we have seven total, uh, tech specialists, integration specialists throughout the district. Um, right now, for our first semester, they've done over nineteen hundred, uh, collaborative lessons, uh, throughout the district. Um, they also provide monthly PD sessions. Uh, they do interest surveys to see what are teachers interested in for those PD sessions. And right now, we have a heavy focus on one-to-one, uh, PD along with some blended learning. Uh, we want, with the blended learning, basically that's just tying that direct instruction back into it, but using that device as a tool. Um, another goal we have for them this year was to write a monthly newsletter. Something they've never done before until this, this current year, and they provide a monthly newsletter for their staff, and they provide collaboration ideas, resources, sites. Um, they do a spotlight on certain students who are doing good things with technology or teachers. Um, they also provide lead groups. Uh, they support the RTI process. Um, they do have clubs, whether it be coding clubs before, after school, robotic clubs. They also do a lot with STEAM and STEM. Uh, digital citizenship, as we are getting more and more technology out there, we can't, we can't emphasize digital citizenship enough. Uh, the picture up in the, in the far right, um, Ms. Wilson from East, she was able to contact Ms. Missouri, and Ms. Missouri came in for our third through fifth grade students and did a lot of, uh, digital citizenship lessons with them. And then, of course, we know all of our, our state assessments now are online, so they provide support with test-taking skills with those online assessments. On the student learning side, you can just look at all these photos here. The number one thing with this technology, what it does, it just provides that student engagement. Students become more engaged when they have that device with them. It also provides them that opportunity to be creative, to be problem solvers, and to work as a team. So, something we're, we're awful proud of. So at this point in time, Aaron and I will take any questions you may have for us.
Any comments or questions?
I guess in the short time they've had these, uh, devices, have you, um, ran across any major bumps in the road?
The Chromebooks, the one-to-one? At this point in time, we really haven't hit any big bumps, to be quite honest with you. The day that we rolled them out, we were a little concerned. Uh, we had scheduled a full-day rollout, and then we'd work with Mrs. Goldford to do an overflow day the next day. And because of the, the front-loading work that, uh, Aaron and I's, um, assistants did, Diane in April, along with Aaron's team and Mrs. Goldford's staff, we were done by lunch that day. I mean, it was so smooth. There really hasn't been any big bumps. Of course, there's little small bumps. Sometimes I've heard some of them forgot them on the bus, but they're on the bus, and Carl has them secure, so he'll get them back to them when they pick them back up. Um, I've heard of some being left at home, and Mom and Dad will bring them up there and talk to them about responsibility. But, um, as far as any big thing right now, I haven't heard of not, anything at all.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, well, while you're there, let's talk about library media.
Oh, yeah, I'm not going to sit down. All right. Library media report. So our goals and objectives for our library media program is to provide teachers and students with the resources to become 21st century learners, uh, provide a diverse book collection to meet the reading interests of all learners, and to research and stay informed of current policies and trends pertaining to library media centers. So within the district, you can see that picture there. That's our, our new media center at the Waynesville Middle School. If you have not been in there, please go visit that place. It's awesome. I mean, it's a beautiful space. Um, we have ten library media specialists throughout our district. Uh, East and Freedom, they have two each. They are large elementary schools. The high school, middle school, sixth grade center, and postelementary schools each have one. Uh, WCC and the Early Childhood Center do have a library, but they currently do not have a, a library media specialist in those spaces. And we do have one, one library, um, secretary that is shared between the high school and the middle school. So, school library media centers, they're a place of opportunity. Um, it's a, it's a place where students can go and collaborate with each other. They can go and develop that love of reading. Um, and also in that picture down the far bottom, uh, right there, you can also see they can get their health and exercise in as they're reading. They're pedaling there on some little trikes, it looks like. And then they can explore the world around them either through, uh, print or electronic resources. So if you ever go into our buildings, I ask you, please make sure you pop your heads into our media centers. It's one of the busiest places you will, you will find in a building. It's, it's the place where everybody goes because it's just full of resources. So please, if you're ever in our building, take the opportunity to go visit one. So our libraries, media centers, uh, books checked out so far are circulated this year. Um, over sixty-eight thousand books. That sounds like a lot. Um, I had them double-check that in our, uh, catalog system. I was like, "Are you sure?" So I'm going to tell you, we've had over sixty-eight thousand books circulated. I'm not going to guarantee you they've been read from cover to cover. But they've been circulated. So that, that is good though, but you can see the need for that print. You can see the need for those books just in the eyes of those little kids there that are those boys that are sitting there. It's awesome to see those boys sitting there enjoying, reading that book. That is, that's just, um, that's what you'll find if you come to our media centers. Uh, we do have some of our libraries that have genrefied their nonfiction collections. Basically, that means like if you went into a big bookstore, um, where they have the sections of cookbooks here, dog books here. So they've just genrefied them where it's easier for those kids when they go to locate those books. Um, other things that pertain to our library media centers is both the fix and flex schedules. Uh, we, uh, we used to have a philosophy many years ago that we are totally flex, which I wish we could be totally flex. But the reality is, we can't be totally flex because of our numbers. Um, our numbers are just too large in our big building. So, the compromise is we're part fixed schedule and we're part flex schedule, which gives that library media specialist an opportunity to collaborate with their, with their counterparts, their peers in the building. We've had a lot of guest readers. They too do STEM and STEAM activities, uh, Makerspace areas, and of course, one of our favorite things, the Love-A-Reading Day. So with our guest readers, um, up here, we have our rocking chair program. Just a little story on the lady up there reading. I will say thirty-eight years ago, that lady was reading to me in a second-grade classroom, and she's still reading. Um, that's awesome. And then, um, down below, a lot of our post-schools, um, have therapy dogs that come in. We really enjoy our Pi partners that come out and read to us. And we've also had some of our librarians this year who have, um, contacted authors, and they've Skyped in and met with students. So that's pretty cool. STEM and STEAM activities, um, we do them whether it's during the day, like this lesson over here on the, on the left. Or we, the STEAM activity, the difference with the STEAM basically is the A stands for art. Uh, so it's the science, technology, engineering, art, and math. Um, there's a STEAM girl, STEAM Academy, I believe that's there. But then we also have many nights where parents come in, and we just hold STEM nights, and they're, and they're well-attended. Uh, parents come in, they enjoy working with their students on the different things, aspects of science, technology, engineering, and math. A Makerspace area, if you're not familiar with it, basically, it's just an area that offers students a space to be creative, uh, using the resources that are available to them in the library media center, whether it be electronic, um, resources, manipulatives, robots, crafts, et cetera. So in the center picture there, you'll see that little blue guy. His name is Dot. It's a little robot. And you can see those little guys are learning to add or subtract by programming that little dot to go down that long number line. So, um, it's just a different learning space than what we are used to as when we grew up and went to a library. Um, at the top right, you can see there's some Native American, um, crafts that were created by one of the, they had a, did a collaborative lesson with their teacher on Native Americans, and they created their, um, I'm not sure what that is up there, TPs and so forth, and they, and they displayed them in the library for everyone to see. Love-A-Reading Day, it's something we, uh, started about four years ago. Um, this year, we have it twice a year, once in the fall and once in the spring. Um, we usually try to theme it out, but they asked for in this, the fall of this year, they really didn't want to theme it out. They wanted to kind of have a week open, kind of instead of a Love-A-Reading Day, kind of have a Love-A-Reading Week, and they kind of did different things on different days. Um, some of the things they did do is we had an author that came in to visit. Um, this author visited multiple schools. Um, in the center there, we have one library that transformed their storage area into a, um, a campfire, basically, storytime. So they had a little, make, a fake fire there, and the kids came in with their, uh, flashlights and hay bales and sat and read books. came in with their flashlights and hay bales and sat and read books. And then they, the other one there on the far right is kind of a book tasting, so kids kind of have certain books they enjoy reading or certain genres they enjoy reading, so they provided them with multiple ones and kind of a different taste of different types of genres, they call it a book tasting, so that was kind of interesting as well. So with that being said, do you have any questions about the library media program?
Questions or comments? Okay, now I guess you're good. Appreciate what you guys do. Health programs policy, Dr. Henry and Mrs. Bales?
We do have a, a policy here for first read this, this evening, it's been through the, the tabs process, and I just want to be, be clear on this, this drug testing policy is, it's for students who go and work due to the program that they're in, if they go and work, say at a, at a hospital and that hospital requires drug testing, for them to be there and to work, they, they are subject to that. So I just wanted to, to clarify the, the intent behind, sometimes when folks see drug testing policy, all things, all sorts of things come up, but that's what this one pertains to, and I know Mrs. Bales has details on that, anything I'm, I'm leaving out at all on the, on that piece?
Nope.
Okay. Take any questions you might have?
All right, no more questions on that. Action item, revised fiscal year nineteen budget, Dr. Berger.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are halfway point of the fiscal year. Fiscal year starts in July, runs out through June thirty, so we're just past that six-month time and it's a good time to, to do a little more comprehensive, comprehensive revision. The budget is over a hundred pages long and it's got lots of good other information in it too, some, kind of some summary information in it, but really I say this during, when we approve the budget, I say it during revision, we can break it down, you know, you can get it break, broke down to a, a site and make it make a lot more sense. Board members are great about asking questions if they, if they have them, but certainly patrons are welcome to holler at me and we can, we'll work through any question they might have. As we get started here, great, I always slip this portion in during the January revision because it's a good place to start, it's the, actually the fiscal year eighteen ASBR. The reason why it fits really well here is we don't finalize our ASBR, the annual secretary board report, and submit that to DESI until August fifteenth, then it goes to our auditors. Typically the board's gonna get some kind of a report from the auditors in the fall, you know, maybe November, and then, and it actually doesn't, doesn't have to be submitted back to DESI, the audit till December thirty-fourth, December, I believe, December fifteenth. So here in January, even though that's six months, it really takes that much time to kind of go through all the processes and it's just another good time to look at it for the board. If I were looking at our ASBR or really any district's ASBR, there'd be three things I would look at immediately to, to kind of find out the fiscal condition of the district. This would be an important thing for me to look at here, and this sixteen point two million dollars in reserves, pull some notes here because I did some math earlier, but I would want, I would want to know the percent of reserves for any district that I was looking at. And the way we do that is we have to take the sixteen million dollars, the ending balance here, and divide that by the total, total expenditures in the incidental and teachers' fund. And if we did that for our numbers, we'd find this at twenty-five percent, and if you pulled up the ASBR, which is one of the reports that's really easy to find on DESI, you would see down here below, it would say twenty-five percent is our ending reserve balance, and that immediately would tell me the district's in a good fiscal state. Our policy actually dictates that if we get to twenty percent or below, we can get there, but we have to take measures to get above twenty percent again. So twenty-five percent's a really good place to be and a good target, we try to stay between twenty and twenty-five percent, so we're on the upper end of that. The second thing I would want to look at if I, if I was just looking at any district and certainly would point you in this direction is, I would see if the operational expenditure, which make, is made up of the incidental fund and the teachers' fund, if in operations in this district's recurring expenses, are they hemorrhaging money or are they making a little money or is it just a flat budget? So to do that, here's total receipts, here's total expenditures, if I added the total receipts across here, I'd get sixty-five point two million. If I added the total expenditures across here, I would get sixty-four point six, so another indicator that that district's in good shape, our district's in good shape. The final thing I would do probably, just at a quick snapshot, and even though this is kind of the thirty thousand foot view, the ASBR is very telling. I would go over here to Fund Four, the capital projects, capital outlay fund, and I would see if they are running in the red or the black there. So again, total receipts, fourteen million, total expenditures, twenty million. This would write, a question would, would come up here, I would say, okay, where did six million dollars go? And of course, this board knows, and we're gonna talk a little bit more about it in an upcoming slide, that six million dollars is just a small part of what's went into Waynesville Middle School Phase One. So any of those three things can, you know, you could be below twenty percent, but you need to know why. You need to, you could deficit spend in operations, but you need to know why, and certainly for Fund Four, you need to know where those balances went. Maybe a last thing I might look at, I'm getting outside of the three I was gonna point out, was the ending balance of capital outlay, thirty-five million dollars, that's a good healthy balance, so the district has some, some resources to, to get some things done in the future. Another thing that would definitely, if I didn't know this district, that I would take note of is no debt service, that is an exception. Most districts will run a debt service to pay for their, for many of their capital needs, our district does not, and so that's a real benefit to, to our folks in the community. Kind of jumping into the revision part, I'll refer to this one more time to get some notes, but it's only a couple slides I'm gonna take a little more time on, but I'm gonna make a few comments to all of them. Looking at our local revenues, so basically broke out in three revenue sources, local, state and federal, and these all look good. For the most part, I've got all good news with maybe just a couple of things to end the presentation that are a little cautionary. But, so total revenues are in great shape, dropped just a little bit maybe, and probably been a little conservative, well, I'm being conservative there, there's no doubt, very optimistic that we'll, that we'll actually meet last year's revenues on total. Down here for local tax, that's this right here, this nine point three million dollars, so a little bit of growth there, that's good. Assess value times our tax levy is projecting a little bit of growth. This one is where that total conservative number comes from, that's Prop C right here. And so that's a statewide sales tax, yet it's in local. So you would, might think that, okay, that's a local sales tax that generates funds for the school district. No, that's a statewide sales tax that generates funds for our school district, all school districts in the state, and it's redistributed, so the big, you know, the power players there are Kansas City, St. Louis and Springfield, but it is channeled back through and, and recognized as local. That is a place that I've been a little more conservative because things are slowing down at the state, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. Oh, but before I go to state, I want to remind the district and our patrons that of the five hundred and sixteen Missouri school districts, ninety-three percent have a higher tax rate, and that's after Prop One. So our patrons still, I've, I've kept this slide in here to remind our patrons, remind our board that we're a, you know, a bargain at Waynesville, get a great education for the local dollars spent. Part of that Prop One, you will remember the local dollars, local dollars. Our folks wanted to see technology and safety, the three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars is a supplement, that's in addition to Mr. Henson's budget, and that's pretty much completely expended now and, and accelerating the PBL two-to-one initiative, one-to-one initiative, need to change that slide, yeah, okay, very good, yeah, two, one-to-one. And then the, on the safety end, the supplement is two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars here. You've seen those slides before, but that's right back in the budget for FY nineteen. Jumping to state revenues, again, a little bit of growth, everything's looking good here, want to talk about this column right here, just, just for a moment. So the two things that drive the basic formula, basic formula here, right here, this twenty-nine million dollars is student attendance, ADA, average daily attendance, so if a student's in attendance all, all the time, they're a hundred percent attendance, that's one ADA. The other thing is called an SAT or a state adequacy target, so that's the number the state is gonna give us that says this is what it takes to educate a student. Both those things are very, very good. We buck the trend of the decline in enrollment, so that ADA is gonna be higher, we project, and right now, I still am confident that the state will get close to the state, the state adequacy target. So right now it sits at sixty-two, sixty-one, and I think it's gonna tick up maybe just a little bit more, but even if it doesn't, we're in pretty good shape, but we're, we're staying pretty conservative on that, but I'm optimistic of the information that continues to come in. And then federal revenues, you know, we beat this to death at, when we approved the budget and again at revision, and we do some information sessions on Impact Aid, but our approach on this is extremely conservative. You'll notice here that last year we brought in twenty-five million dollars, total twenty-one million dollars is what I'm projecting, and the reason why is every year we budget fifteen millions in Department of Ed Impact Aid, but we always bring in more than that. So twenty million in the previous year and you can see that historically, and the reason being is everything over fifteen million dollars is B two dollars, okay, so we've just have, had a long history of being very conservative about that. And if you caught me there and you said, you said fifteen million dollars, what's that five hundred and eighty-five thousand? That's, it's still Impact Aid, but it comes from the Department of Defense. So that's an actual number, we get that very early in the year, so the two lines there of Impact Aid, in the budget, we'll say fifteen million dollars, I think we'll beat that. And the other one is Impact Aid, DOD, and five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, it's an actual number. The other thing about this number that when I typically write the board a, update later in the year is, because the fiscal year of the feds does not align with the fiscal year of the state, it's possible I won't get that money. We manage that pretty tightly because I usually try to call it in to our fiscal year, but there's a possibility that we would still get the money, but it would be after June and it wouldn't hit our books, and we may fall closer to that, but typically, we're able to, to get that money in. That will be one of my cautionary tales at the end of, at the end of the presentation though. Breaking down the operating expenses, again, that's Fund One and Fund Two, this is a great statistic often cited, but of the operational budget, eighty percent is in salaries and benefits, and then you can see the other breakouts here, we'll go through those slide by slide. Expenses for the employee salary and benefits, this is hitting the mark of our projections, so I was relieved to see this. If you remember, the salary here from forty point nine to forty-three, we projected, what we did to the salary schedule would be about a two million dollar increase, so that's pretty close to the projection, and here in benefits, we projected a five hundred thousand dollar increase in benefits due to a six percent increase in our health insurance primarily, and so all those things are, are still on target, feel pretty confident with those. Expenses is for our purchase services, this is one that we've kind of drilled down on more recently, and what we need to be conscious of here, as we see that expenditure increase, we have recoded, we have had some things in, in different funds and in different codes, and some of those things are now being paid out of a purchase service code. An example is PennMac, okay, that might be paid out of an incidental or a Fund Two fund previously, and since we've been with PennMac, now that would be a purchase service. Another example would be OPA, would be an example where, would certainly be paid out of Fund One as we had our own food service, and as that went to a purchase service through OPA, that's gonna increase the expenditure. More recently, K-12 ITC, so a lot of our Fund Four expenditures to support our infrastructure and technology would have been Fund Four, and that makes up a big part of this increase this year, moving over there. So we're drilling down on that to kind of monitor that. We expected it to increase and it certainly isn't an alarming number for me, but it's certainly one we wanted to dig down on. So we've been digging down with the departments on that. Food, all these three really, we've, we've spent a pretty good bit of time that, the next two slides that I'll cover. The food service expenditure, that is probably one of the sole numbers I have in that's fairly aggressive. Whenever I mean aggressive, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful to beat that number if it comes over, you know, I wouldn't be shocked on that, but it's a good place to be aggressive with because it's a vendor. So we're going close to a renewal on a contract year, we've got this year and next year to be with them, then we'll be looking at renewal, so we're trying to push just a little bit and get that number down to, like to see it under a three million dollar mark, but keep in mind, we've taken the deficit in food service in the time we've been with OPA from, we started at a million dollars and we've got that down to three hundred thousand dollars. This would come even below three hundred thousand dollars, so we'll see if they hit my mark. They're optimistic, I'm optimistic, and we'll just see how it plays out in June. Transportation expenditure, again, this one I've, I've kind of dialed back down, there's a, a few things going on here, the state has committed a little more resources to transportation. So of allowable expenses, the state by, by commitment is supposed to pay for seventy-five percent of our allowable expenditures. For the last decade plus, they have failed to do that, they have fell well short. Up until this year, we would get less than twenty percent of allowable expenditures, we're targeted to get about thirty percent of allowable expenditures this year. So there is a little bit of a buzz over the last couple of years, legislature would like to fund transportation more. With that, we're kind of looking at that and I've worked with Mr. Wilkin a little bit and trying to drill down there and be, be more efficient, one, but because the allowable expense, but also the allowable expenses may come out at a higher rate in, in future years, we're hopeful of that. Another kind of factor of that is some things I can put in there and be considered allowable expend, expenses. An example might be kid account. So I've pulled kid account out for the time, have that out in buildings, because I can actually be penalized if I put, if my, if I put too many of those things that create expenditures into that line. Now the most I'm gonna get out of anything is a thirty percent return, but I've got to balance what it was gonna cost me to be penalized if I put anything I can in there versus pulling it out, not taking the penalty, penalty and realizing the full thirty percent of the transportation formula. I've been getting a little bit down in the weeds, I know, so if you want to have a further conversation on that, but, so we'll be potentially making some changes down the stretch because we're right at the penalty line, and I've got to do, I've got to do some calculations if we're going to stretch, down the stretch to maximize our revenues out of transportation. Capital expenses, capital project expenses, you can see our history there, we've had some construction projects on and off, but this, right here, this principal and interest, that's our lease purchase notes, and we commit about one point five million dollars annually, roughly, to that. Of course, we're a little more here this year than what would be a normal year, but we've got, we'll break that out in just a minute, but we've got a little bit of Waynesville Middle School in there, Phase One, and then the little bit of going into Phase Two. That breakout is here, so our actual closeout on our contract was eighteen point one of that, and this fiscal year, we realized two point eight million dollars of that total contract out of, out of this fiscal year. That will, that's a, that's a actual number, it's a closeout number, outside of something unforeseen, nothing's gonna change on that number. We also took the district asbestos project as part of that and kind of owned that ourselves as a district, we, we did that, we've got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted for that, and then the preliminary work for Phase Two, not the construction work, we'll have to come back and get a budget amendment for that, but architectural, anything else that we might, that, that readies us, civil engineering, anything like that, of that nature, out of that Phase Two line, we've got three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there right now, but that's a decision forthcoming to the board this, the next upcoming months regarding the entire project Phase Two. That brings us to the total district expenditure, and so right now we sit at seventy-eight point eight, and so, you know, just looking at that historically, you would know, okay, they had a project in eighteen, that was Phase One, a little bit more, a little bit of that Phase One project still lingering over into FY nineteen, about three million dollars. And so this is a table that absolutely will change. This is not the ASBR, this is just our budget summary, this is previous, prior to transfers, but the most important thing, you can make some, the same observations that you made from the ASBR over to this, but this is fluid. The ASBR is a done deal, this is FY nineteen budget summary, but the wise thing to do would be, okay, where do we project to be? If we took that, again, if we took that sixteen million dollars and divided it by our expenditures and operations, once again, we, we would hit the target of twenty-five percent. Now could that fall down to twenty-four? I don't anticipate it to, but I think we're gonna be safely twenty-four, twenty-five percent at the end of the year, so that's, that's all really good news. You could do those same exercises that we did earlier, looking at the Fund Four, I went ahead and pulled out the Fund Three because it's, you know, it has no activity into it, but to see what we estimate to expend and what we estimate to receive. A couple of things of concern are, you know, all in all, this is probably as rosy of a budget that I put together for FY19, and at budget revision, I'm as optimistic as I have been in my tenure here at Waynesville. However, it wouldn't be a budget presentation without a little bit of gloom and doom. And so one thing that is a little bit of thunder is that the state's general revenue income is down $128 million compared to a year ago. So the, there was a tax code error that Missouri made down from the feds where they weren't collecting enough early on. They think they're going to catch up in the second half of the year. There is also the implications of the tax cuts of 2014 that have been in my budget concerns since 2014. Those are having an impact. Most numbers that I've seen that have come from different groups think that the 2014 tax cuts are impacting the state's budget to the tune of about $300 million. So right now, the state is telling us that they're going to make up this ground. And even if they don't make up this ground, they were running off a $300 million surplus from the prior year. So all that tells me the end of this year is going to be okay, I think, 2020, outside of something, you know, blindsiding us, 2020 is not going to be as easy as 2019. It does not look like right now. One thing that's on our minds is federal revenues. The United States Department of Ag, Food and Nutritional Services, provided DSE with additional funding to support child nutritional programs during the partial government shutdown into the month of March. So with the government shutdown, the partial government shutdown, we do have funding through March, so that's through, actually, March would mean through February's claims. So we could realize, if the government doesn't open back up, we could realize three months of not getting food service federal dollars, and it might surprise you, we get over $1 million in food service federal dollars. So that's, you know, I would project it typically, whether it be federal or state, and certainly locally, you start out the year getting revenues slower than you do at the end of the year. So they try to hold the money longer so it can, you know, they can stay, it can stay in their hands for interest and for projection reasons. But, so those last three payments would be our biggest payments. And so that's a little concerning. I would estimate that to be at about $300,000 probably, historically, is what we've gotten down the stretch from food service. And to finally, maybe button this up, but also leave on the bright side is, one question that I've fielded a couple times is, what does the partial shutdown do to Impact Aid? Because Impact Aid's a lot bigger number than the $1 million we're talking about for food service. That's a 15 to 20 billion dollar number, and it has no impact on it. So education was appropriated right out of the gate this year, which was very different. And in fact, they project, without doing any early requests for funding or anything, to have all of our Impact Aid, all of our Impact Aid revenues in earlier than they ever have since I've been here. So that was talking to NAFIS just probably 10 days ago, and very optimistic. So won't impact our Impact Aid, which is a huge revenue source for us. Looking good, moving into the last half of FY19. Going to be able to meet all of our budget development goals, and looking forward to receiving information on FY20 and getting to work on that. Entertain any questions for the board, and I appreciate your patience.
Dr. Berger, do you anticipate, once the government partial shutdown is over, to receive back payment for that?
Great question, and in my rehearsal in my mind, I certainly meant to mention that. We do. So it would, we would get that, let's say if it was $300,000 short, we, and they didn't open the government until late in the fiscal year, the state fiscal year. So by June 30th, then we would get that money. All indications are we'd get that money, it just might be after the fiscal year. And to be honest with you, I think I'm conservative. If that were the only thing that happened, I'm conservative in other areas where we'd still make budget. You know, just a little bit of rumbling at the state, a little bit of rumbling at the Fed Department, maybe probably reel it in just a little bit on this January revision, but great question. So to sum it, yes, we're going to get that money, just maybe after this fiscal year. Assuming it opens up.
Well, at some point, right.
Right, that's right.
Any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve the revised FY19 budget?
I'll do that.
Keenan makes a motion. Dr. Fulmer seconds. All in favor, show a hand. Be annual school board election ballot, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The final date to file for the Board of Education candidacy was today, January 15, 2019, at 5:00 PM. The proposed ballot format and candidates are attached. April 2, 2019 is the election. These will be submitted to the county clerk prior to the deadline of January 22, 2019. The names who have signed up for the board election are Ricky Harn, Charles Howard, Andy Anderson, Charles Quinn, Aaron Pondrum, and Christopher Kramer.
When with Quinn? Do I have a motion to approve the annual school board election ballot? Second, Mr. Quinn, all in favor, show a hand. Action I M C, 2019 Summer School Proposal, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. The 2019 summer school program will be conducted from June 3 through June 28. Providing each building has sufficient numbers, summer school will be held at each of our sites, and all sites will serve breakfast and lunch. A limited number of virtual course offerings will be piloted this summer. Administration requests a motion to approve the 2019 Summer School Proposal as presented.
Any questions or comments?
No, I was going to make a motion.
Making the motion. Do I have a motion? Ms. Crider makes a motion. Mr. Dearing seconds. All in favor, show a hand. Seven oh, motion carries. Virtual course procedures, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Attached for the board's review and consideration are the following procedures for virtual learning courses. AP I, virtual courses, best educational interest determination, and AP II, virtual courses, enrollment, course delivery, and course offerings. Policy IGCD that those procedures go along with was previously approved. Administration requests a motion to approve virtual course procedures as presented.
Any questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Anybody makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Crider makes a second. All in favor, show a hand. Seven oh, motion carries. Closed session, closed record, closed vote is allowed by RSMO, 610.021, Section 3, hiring, firing, and disciplining or promotion of employees, and Section 13, individual personal records, performance ratings. Do I have a motion to enter into closed session?
I'll make that motion.
Keenan makes a motion, I have a second. Mr. Riley makes a second. Roll call, vote please.
Yes.
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 Yes, we are in closed session.